All to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, May 6, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role, please?
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Romanelle.
Here.
Mayor Protem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yeah.
Mayor Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, first up, we have disclosures of conflicts of interest. Javon, are you online?
Hey, Mary. Yes, I'm, I'm online. I'm here. And no conflict of interest to report. Can you guys hear me all right? Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't hear it on the TVs.
The mics on the.
You, you don't.
We do. We, when he's remote, we should be able to hear.
Javon, try it again.
Yep. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, a little. We, I could, I heard him, but we need, he needs to turn up more. Javon, can you, yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Any conflicts of interest, Mr. Quarles?
Uh, no conflicts of interest to report.
Excellent. Thank you. Then before us, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications or questions about the agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I'll look for motion.
Make a motion to accept the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion is second. Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Aye.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanelle.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. And now we have several proclamations. Um, the first one up is Small Business Week proclamation, and we do have a guest with us today. You'd like to come introduce yourself to the council and got a few minutes to discuss the proclamation of Small Business Week.
Very good. Thank you so much. Good evening, council members and mayor. Uh, thank you for having me. My name is Brandon Eldridge. I'm the Executive Director at the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center. We provide low-cost workshops and free consultations to entrepreneurs in the community. Um, you want me to say a few words now, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm prepared to your remarks, so bear with me. Uh, I would like to thank you all for celebrating entrepreneurship tonight. Um, as you may know, National Small Business Week was April 29th through May 3rd this year, and we had a great opportunity to celebrate a lot of small businesses in our community across the region over the course of the week. We had five different events that we engaged entrepreneurs through various things like uh, marketing business panels and labor market issues and our work celebration that some of you may have attended at Boot Barn Hall on Monday night. So if you had a chance to join us there, you saw over 300 people show up and really celebrate the real spirit of, of what it means to run a small business. Um, it's often said that uh, small business is the backbone of our community and the lifeblood to our economy and really just the embodiment of the American dream, and I don't think that is more evident than in the Pike's Peak region. So thank you for supporting Small Business Week. Uh, we actually co-host this event with the BBB of Southern Colorado and our host, the Colorado Springs Chamber in EDC. Um, it's been an event that we've actually put on for about 18 years running, uh, with our presenting sponsor, US Bank. So we've had a lot of great excitement and uh, if you were on social media at all last week, you might have saw some of our opportunities. We really, um, uh, we're out there, uh, really celebrating entrepreneurship. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize our very own Tri-Lakes Chamber. Um, Mr. Terry Hayes is here tonight, and I can tell you that we've had unwavering support from the Tri-Lakes Chamber in terms of, uh, working with entrepreneurs in this community. We actually run a monthly workshop where we help educate local entrepreneurs on different pieces of running their business. We try and target on things like marketing, human resources, technology, like cybersecurity I heard earlier. Um, just various ways that help kind of alleviate the pain of running a small business. So I would like to say thank you to our Tri-Lakes Chamber for the wonderful, wonderful support that we receive every single year and really every single month. Um, in closing, I just would like to say thank you for championing small business. Um, it really is the lifeblood of what we do, and your support of Small Business Week is really, really important to the work that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, I will, uh, read the proclamation for and it, well, hopefully next year, we will have you, have you here two weeks before uh, instead of after, but, um, so proclamation to recognize April 28th through May 4th as National Small Business Week, whereas the resilience of American small businesses continue to drive America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years, fostering the competition and innovation that creates opportunities for families, workers, and neighborhoods. And whereas, small businesses are the backbone of our communities and the American economy, employing more than half our nation's workers, enriching our main streets, making parts and products in America to fuel our supply chains, building our nation's infrastructure and innovating and inventing the products of tomorrow. And whereas, the historic investments made through the President's American Rescue Plan, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, CHIPS, and Science Act, and Inflation Reduction Act are ensuring small businesses can access federal capital support, technical assistance, contracting opportunities, and other resources to help lead the way as we rebuild America's roads and bridges and build a clean energy economy for the future. And whereas, when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture and enjoy new opportunities to build generational wealth. And whereas, entrepreneurship continues to be one of the best pathways to the American dream, evidenced by the historic small business boom with a record 16.5 million Americans applying to start businesses since January 20th, 2021, including 5.5 million last year. And whereas, by renewing our commitment to supporting small businesses, we can maintain our global competitiveness and build a stronger nation where everyone can succeed from the bottom up and middle out. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas, the Town of Monument supports and joins in this national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the American economy and their importance in ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims April 28th through May 4th, 2024, as National Small Business Week, proclaim this sixth day of May, 2024. All right. Thank you very much for that. Um, for those who would have interest in seeing where the small business and Veterans Business Administration is Catalyst Campus in, um, Colorado Springs on Pike's Peak. All right, Pike's Peak, really cool facility. There's also a software factory there. If you want to see what our, um, military programmers are up to, it's a really cool campus. They have beer taps live all the time. So bonus, bonus for that, that cool. Do we have beer taps, Mike? Something to think about.
On the direction council, though, we can't.
All right. Next up, National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month Proclamation. Mr. Foreman.
Yes, sir. As you know, May is National City, Town, and Village Month. Proclamation, uh, I can present to the council, recognize May as National City, Town, and Village. Do you want me to read this?
I'll go ahead and read it. I'll be glad to read it. Thank you. Whereas, the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by State Municipal Leagues, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. Whereas, the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interest of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. Whereas, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. Whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. Whereas, local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residences, residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. Whereas, from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in the world history. Whereas Monument was first incorporated in 1879 and is proudly served today by the Monument Town Council and a municipal workforce of 78 dedicated public servants. Now therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims May 24th as the National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary.
Thank you. 145 years. Only, only five more years left for the big one.
That's right.
Plan us.
Start planning.
All right. Next up, we have Professional Municipal Clerks Week proclamation. Would we like our municipal clerk to read the proclamation?
Absolutely not. Thanks, though. I appreciate the offer.
Mr. Foreman.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, as you know, it's the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th through the eleventh, through the 11th. We have two sitting before you, Tina Erickson, our town clerk, and our deputy town clerk, Sylvia Simpson. Whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest amongst public servants. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of the government at other levels. And whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality rendering equal service to all. Whereas, the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims May 5th through the 11th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they represent. And I'd like to recognize both Sylvia Simpson and Tina Erickson, if you could stand up. As you know, Tina's been doing this job now for how long?
You don't even remember.
It feels like 10 years.
Little over a year. Right. So, uh, we really appreciate the work she does. And then as our charter, uh, reminds us, we have to have a deputy town clerk, so we hired Sylvia Simpson. And Sylvia is new to our area, but not new to the profession. She's done a great job in the past, so we really appreciate and look forward to her service to the Town of Monument.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing someone from Arizona. That's awesome. Because I'm feeling outnumbered by all the Texans. All right. Next up, uh, we have National Police Week proclamation. A lot of uh, proclamations going on. Chief, Reagan, gonna speak from back there? You want to come up here or?
Certainly.
Yes, please. Did you bring, uh, the entire department with you? Is the entire department here to? Department of one.
Department of one. Ooh, I brought all the, I noticed they're out of mine.
Put some uniforms on them. All right. I would explain it, but the whole proclamation extended, so I'll just go through it. Proclamation to recognize May 12th through May 18th as Police Week. Whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Monument Police Department. And whereas, since 1766, more than 26,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 136 police officers were killed in the line of duty in 2023. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2024. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12th through 18th. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half staff. Now therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims May 12th through May 18th, 2024, as Police Week in the Town of Monument and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and across the nation, proclaiming the sixth day of May, 2024.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything you and the force does to protect Monument and the surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Chief. Question. Honor or celebrate?
Not for us.
Okay.
There is one, there is one at the county level on the 17th. Yep.
Wait, did we lose a proclamation? I thought there was five. Oh, okay. I forgot. All right. We'll move on. Uh, resolution number 25, 2024, resolution approving the final plat for Monument Lake Beachfront filing number one, Lauren Richardson.
Good evening. Um, do I have, uh, the ability to turn my camera? It's no big deal. I, I don't have to. Um, all right. Well, I will just start. A good evening, mayor and town council. Okay, there we go. Camera. There we go. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, uh, mayor and town council members. Tonight I'll present the Monument Lake Beachfront filing number one, final plat. Um, let me just share my screen with everyone. See. That's, Will, is that something, uh, you can?
Yes.
Sorry, it's grayed out right now.
If it's grayed out, then.
Sorry, it's still, it's still not allowing me to share. My apologies. It says only meeting organizers and presenters.
Send as a presenter, so I apologize. If it's grayed out, I'm, I'm down to being unable to, uh, correct that.
We have to correct that in the future, though, if we have people presenting online.
And what's the three button options that you have for her? On her picture, the three, the three dots. So she's, she's a presenter?
She is a presenter, yes.
Yeah.
Causing the problem.
Yeah, it's just, it's not even allowing me to click the share button. See, can I maybe send it to somebody who does have, uh, the?
Yes, and if you email it to me, I can bring it up.
Uh, is that you? Who, who's talking?
It's Will.
Oh, okay. Yes, absolutely. We'll get this on the road.
You yourself for a moment, Laura, get a lot of feedback off of your. Like.
Sorry.
Have you sent anything to me? Tina, is it in the agenda package already?
Um, yeah, I did send it to, um, to Tina. I did send it to Tina. I apologize. Will, I don't have your email right up on, you know.
Is, is her presentation in the packet?
Yes, they all, yes. Everything except the applicant's presentation, uh, which she has emailed telling me to send it to him. Yes, of course. All right, Will, I have sent you, um, the beachfront presentation, and I'm going to send you two other, or one other email with, for the Falcon Commerce Center.
Well, the presentation's in the packet. We just need to be told what page we're, we're looking at.
Well, then nobody else can see it.
Oh, that's true. I can share my screen.
Share your screen.
I'm working on it.
All right. Uh, Will, I have sent you, uh, the Falcon Commerce Center, um, applicant presentation. Um, mine should be in the packet.
Yeah, you know what page the first one, that she's? But it's 16.
Yeah, 60 something for sure. You could probably go to like 16, nine. Or wait, you might want to go through that. I think it's just.
Yeah, we're going to go through the plan, the Planning Commission information first, right?
It's on, we have 64.
Okay, Will, you should have all of them now. All three presentations.
Like, correct the first one? Yes.
It's the memorandum.
Yeah, this is just the beginning. Did you want to scroll down a little bit? PowerPoint, if you don't mind.
Is this the page that you want?
I'll keep pulling.
Say 64.
Keep going. Yes.
Actually, go to 65. So you wanted to go to the next page.
Is correct?
Um, no, I, we're still, a- as far as I'm seeing, it's a, a different, it's the Planning Commission minutes, looks like.
64 is the memorandum from the associate planner.
Yes, and thank you very much. Um, there should be a, a PowerPoint presentation, um, at the end, so probably 10 pages down, I would guess. Um, but Will, I did send you, uh, a PowerPoint presentation for each. You know.
There's no PowerPoint in the, in the packet.
Yeah, there's no PowerPoint in this packet.
Oh, well, my, my apologies. Um, could you?
It's not your fault.
Hey. Okay, yeah. So you want the Falcon Commerce Center filing? No.
No.
No, beach, um, Monument Lake Beachfront.
Okay.
There's a PowerPoint for it on 92.
92. Media 92. Hey, thank you. Appreciate your help. Nope.
There we go. Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. So if you go down just the project context, um, we'll, we'll get started. All right. So this is a town project, and the applicant is the Town of Monument. All right, so this is a town project, and the applicant is the town of Monument. Um, the site is approximately two point seven acres. Uh, the overall request from the applicant is to approve the final plat. The application was included in the public notice, published in the Gazette on March twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the purpose of this plat is to consolidate several town-owned dedicated lot easements and parcels into one, uh, legal parcel. The proposed plat includes, um, three remaining utility and access easements. The use of the site would remain park open space, um, open to the public. The proposed plat would allow for future park improvements. Uh, this application was presented to the planning commission on April tenth, and it received seven to zero recommendation for approval. All right, next slide. Great. Uh, this slide shows the current status of the area of the site. You can see it has numerous easements and exhibits and parcels. It's very difficult to see what's going on there. Our next slide. Ah, yes, this is the proposed plat. Um, so it would create one lot. With a couple of existing utility and access easements, um, but it would simplify the plat and the remaining easement locations. Okay, next slide. The review criteria. Uh, the review criteria is, uh, in, in the staff report as well, and on the slide, um, it is in section eighteen point zero two point two six zero of the Monument Town Code. Staff finds this project does conform to the review criteria. So I will summarize each of the criteria and the staff findings for each of them. The first criteria. Does it conform, um, to the cop plan and other approved plans? Um, yes, this staff finds, yes, this proposed final plat will combine existing tracks into one parcel. Simplifying ownership as well as giving the town additional space for park improvements. The plat conforms with the intent and priorities listed in the comprehensive plan and trails and open space plan. Such as improving access to parks and providing space for the maintenance of town parks. The second criteria, uh, is the plat harmonious with the development surrounding the site. Staff finds that, yes, much of the surrounding land is existing park space, making this addition compatible. Number three, of the lot and development patterns ensure adequate light, air, et cetera. Um, the lot and development patterns proposed with this final plat ensure adequate light, air, parks, open space, and other places for the public use. Uh, the proposed plat will be available for public use. Four, uh, the plat adequately provides access to all lots. And staff finds that the proposed plat design provides adequate access to all lots and tracks and provides a clear understanding of easement locations. Number five, uh, does the plat show adequate, safe, efficient public improvements utilities to serve the subdivision? Staff finds that, yes, the proposed final plat will not remove any access. Uh, the plat aims to declutter, uh, the many town-owned parcels, uh, tracks and dedicated easements, um, allowing the town to use the combined space for park improvements. Next slide. All right, number six, uh, the plat design provides for adequate protection from natural hazards. Uh, the plat design provides for adequate protection from fire, flood, geologic hazards, significant soil constraints and other dangers. It provides for proper design of storm drainage, erosion control, and streets. Seven. The plat conforms to all applicable provisions of these regulations and other parts of the municipal code. Staff finds that, yes, it does. The application was received by numerous, or was, sorry, was reviewed by numerous referral agencies and staff. Uh, the final version of the plat included, uh, with this report has satisfied referral comments as well as, um, other pro, applicable provisions of the Monument Municipal Code. Okay, number eight. Uh, the plat provides for preservation and conservation of certain irreplaceable natural areas. Staff finds that, yes, the plat design provides for the preservation and conservation of the listed natural areas and features. The site is located along the edge of the Monument Lake, which is a park slash open space area. The proposed plat does not propose a change of use and would remain park slash open space. And used for access and easements as well as park improvements and maintenance. Number nine, the plat will provide for preservation and conservation of vegetation. And staff finds that the proposed final plat design does not interfere with the preservation and conservation of vegetation or wildlife. Number ten, the final plat is generally consistent with the preliminary plat as applicable. And while the application was not preceded by a preliminary plat, it does satisfy the intent and priorities listed in the comprehensive plan. And the parks, trails, and open space plan, such as improving access to parks and providing space for the maintenance of town parks. Um, next slide. All right, staff finds that the proposed final plat adequately meets the review criteria. And recommends town council approve it. As mentioned earlier, the planning commission recommended approval, uh, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four. And, uh, that is it. Uh, thank you for your time, and I apologize for that long wait for this. And we're here to answer any question.
Okay, um, any questions from the council related to this item? All right, this is a public hearing item.
Hold on, we got questions.
Oh, you do.
Oh, okay. I just have two small questions. First question is the southern boundary of this also butts town-owned property. Why does this stop at this particular space?
Um. That is, that's a good question. Um, might have to ask the applicant who is online. I believe Madeline is the head of the Parks Department. She might know a little bit more than I do.
Okay, then I'll, I'll pop the second question out there too, and maybe she'll have to answer that one as well. Um, and then, uh, Lake Mountain Lane is listed as a private road. Why is that?
Yeah, that's, that is another good question. Um, possibly Mike might know the, the answer to that. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Why it would be a private, uh, lane.
I don't know the answer to that, but we could find that out for you. I think it was platted prior to me being here, so I'd have to look at that.
Okay, do you know why it was stopped? I don't see Madeline on here.
I'm on, um, but unfortunately, I don't, I unfortunately don't know the answer to that question either. This project was started, um, prior to me becoming the director of this department, so I would need to look into the answer to that question.
Okay, do you know why this, why this one particular lot stops where it does? Is there a reason for that, or is just to clean up this section of it, and then we got other parcels south?
Yeah, with my understanding, it was to clean up this section of the utility easements. Um, they, uh, just needed to clean that section up, and so this was. Again, this was started prior to me becoming the director of this department, and so that was my understanding of this process.
Okay. All right, that was all I had.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, seeing that this is a public hearing item, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak for or against this resolution? Anybody online?
Seeing them online, mayor.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the council for further questions or a motion.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to figure out if we can. If we need to clean this up because it says private road or not. Um, why that is and who would? In essence, does the town own that road, or is that an easement for somebody else that owns that road? And that's just the only real question I have on that.
And we'll find that out for you. It says that you can look at survey note number eight.
Yeah. But it didn't have anything.
So this is the private road is the road leading from Mitchell to the lake?
Yeah, Lake Mountain Road, it says private, private road, forty, forty-foot access easement per reception number, whatever it is.
I do believe that that was when they built those, I believe it's six homes, that that road did not exist until those homes were built, and I believe that is why it is private.
Well, it was, it was there, it was just dirt, and then it got paved, and I, I'm not sure who paved it. I thought the town did, but maybe they paved it, but, um.
I do know there is an HOA that, um, manages that section of, of that, um, of those houses.
Told you.
Well, no, this, uh, the, but this is, if this is town property right here, there's going to be no HOA that's going to manage the road, right? Is that right? Do we know? Who takes care of this room?
He said, we'll find out. But I think we need to get with staff, and we'll find out and get back with everybody. Trying to answer that question here is probably impossible.
Right?
So are we wanting to kick this down the road then, or what are we doing? So we can get to the bottom line.
Well, I don't think we have the answers we need.
So the whole point of this is to combine a bunch of lots, or, and part of it, we don't know who owns. The road. That everybody uses on a regular basis to get down to the lake. Is that what I'm getting from this?
No, the road, the road that you get, uh, that you access from Mitchell down to the lake is town property. It's that road, the road that goes to the north that services those homes, there's like a gate there, and from there north is what I believe is private.
Yeah, that is private, but that's Lake Vista Point, and Lake Mountain Lane is what accesses off of Mitchell, and that's. Got, you know, paved a couple of years ago, whatever. Um, and, uh, that's what shows up on this. Um, flat as.
Private.
A private, private road and a forty-foot access easement. Now, I'm sure the access easement has to do with Lake Vista, because that would be granting them an access easement. Even though it's a, if it's a public road, they wouldn't need it. So that brings another question as to why it's a private road.
And Madeline, who worked on, who worked on this with you from, um, our legal firm? Was it Javon?
Um, no, I believe this was Mr. Cole.
I did, okay. Um, two options, you could continue this to our next meeting if you wanted to, or you could approve it tonight. We could clarify the questions that you have. I don't think the questions that you have really affect what we're trying to do here tonight, but it's really your decision on what you want to do.
Okay, uh, well, it is up to the council to, to make a motion to either approve or continue this, so, um. I don't know how you all feel about it, but I, I, if you don't think you have enough information, um, based on the. Drawings in the presentation, then I think you've got an answer as to what the motion should be.
Or we could ask Javon, maybe Javon could help us with that.
Or you can ask Javon.
Are you, are you there, Javon? Is, is this, is this something we could approve as is, and they could clarify this later, or do we need to have this information clarified now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just verifying, you know, you, there's some, some different requirements as far as like, you know, a minor plat amendment, um, or is it major? So I'm verifying that right now. Um. If, if it's minor, I think that, um, you could go ahead and, and approve this, and you can always have a plat amendment if that's necessary, um, without too much additional headache.
I guess now my question is, shouldn't the, the drawings reflect the, the correct information?
Right.
So if we don't know whether it's a private road or town road. We potentially, it, Javon, it, is that part of the amendment to the plat where we designate the private road, town road, if, if it is town road?
Not totally. I mean, you, you would have to, if it is actually a private road, uh, there's going to be more to that process, more so than just amending the plat. Um.
But if it's town road and not a private road, is that just an amendment? Or do we still have to go through the whole process?
If it is actually a town road, then you're good to go, and we can just, you can just amend, um, the plat to reflect that.
Right, it's a problem if it's a private road. Mr. Ford is sort of.
On the county parcels, it is the town of Monument Road.
So why is this drawing show something different?
I'm not sure. Can't, can't answer that question.
Because I mean.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
I think.
Till we get better information.
So then someone make a motion.
Hold on one second, I ask Madeline one question. Madeline, how does this affect the grant if we have to wait two more weeks?
We are still waiting for the approval from Colorado Parks and Wildlife to move forward, so it would not affect us at all.
All right, then I would make a motion to kick, to move this, to continue this until the May twentieth meeting where these documents can be amended to the proper information. Um, but we don't need the presentation again, I don't think.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to May twentieth. Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
Air Pro Tem K?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella? Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, resolution twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the final plat for Falcon Commerce Center filing number three. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you very much. Uh, Will, do you have that PowerPoint open, possible?
Falcon Commerce filing?
Yep. Oh, there's, there's two. One is for the applicant and one is staff's presentation.
Okay, which one?
Um, I can't really tell from here. I think that is the applicant's, um, possibly, um, all of staff's has a, a common, yeah, that's the applicant presentation.
Is this the one that you want, or no?
No, no.
You might have something else.
Perfect. All right. Well, I will just start. Uh, this is Falcon Commerce Center filing number three final plat, what we will talk about tonight. If we want to go to the second slide, possible. Thank you. Uh, this project is located south of Baptist Road, west of I twenty-five, and north of the U.S. Air Force Academy. The project representative is, uh, I believe, online and here, uh, in person tonight. Um, the site is approximately two point six five acres. It is directly south of the Falcon Commerce Center filing two final plat that was approved in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the related Falcon Commerce Center Phase Two preliminary PUD was approved, uh, in twenty twenty-two as well. The proposed final plat would be a right-of-way extension south of Tarazo Drive. Uh, the planning commission again, a recommended approval of resolution number twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four with the condition. Want to go to the next one, please? All right, here's a photo of the existing site from Google Earth. Uh, on the right is the proposed final plat, and the highlighted area you can see there at the bottom is the part that we're discussing tonight. The project has satisfied public notice requirements. The project is about one thousand three hundred and twenty-five feet south and extends across Jackson Creek. From the existing temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Tarazo Drive. My next slide, please. All right, so the review criteria listed here are also in the staff report. Uh, they are from section eighteen. Uh, they are from section eighteen point zero two point two six zero of the Monument Town Code. Staff finds that this project does conform with the review criteria. Uh, I will not go through each criterion since we, we just did that and they are on the screen there for you and, and in the staff report or datum. So staff findings for the first one, uh, the plat does conform with the town's comprehensive plan as well as the parks, trails and open space plan. The plat and associated documents conform to policies found in the comprehensive plan by providing additional access and connectivity to future development, working with state and federal agencies and development responsibly, and updating transportation infrastructure. Two, uh, the proposed plat is a further extension of Tarazo Drive that was previously linked through Falcon Commerce Center filing number two. The layout of Tarazo Drive by the plat, this plat is consistent with the approved sketch plan and the PUD. A staff finds that this plat is harmonious with the surrounding development. The third criterion. Um, this requirement has been met, the proposed final plat is an, is an extension of Tarazo Drive and proposes, proposes sidewalks for pedestrian and bike access for public use. Number four. Uh, the proposed filing number three plat, final plat will extend across Tarazo Drive, so allow for a driveway cut in order to access the gravel road leading to the wastewater treatment plant. The extension will also allow for access to, um, as yet undeveloped parts of Commerce, Falcon Commerce Center subdivision and other future developments south of Jackson Creek. Right, next page. All right, um, I'm sorry, uh, we're on number five. Apologize, can you go up one? Thank you. Uh, the plat proposes improvements, this is, yeah, number five, the plat proposes improvements to the road utility infrastructure, including storm sewer, sanitary sewer and water systems, gas, electric and communication lines. Uh, the plat will also require the replacement of the bridge currently spanning Jackson Creek. Uh, the bridge replacement would need to meet federal and state standards in order to accommodate any flood events. The narrative submitted with the final plat has noted that the collaboration with the US Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA uh, will be required since the improvements would have possible impacts on existing wetlands and floodplains. Uh, and I do know that they have, um, they're on the, the very last parts of the permit approvals with those federal agencies. On next page now. Number six. Right, the proposed plat, uh, design provides adequate protection from the hazards listed above and provides the proper design for stormwater drainage, erosion control and streets. The extension of Tarazo Drive right-of-way, formalized by this plat crosses Jackson Creek one hundred year floodplain. The proposed infrastructure improvements, uh, include the development of the public roadway and associated infrastructure. The applicant proposes removal of the existing bridge that is currently undersized and replacing it with channel improvements and, or sorry, with a culvert storm sewer outfall into the existing creek and associated channel improvements at Jackson Creek. All these improvements have been reviewed by town agencies. A conditional letter of map revision or CLOMAR will be required to be submitted by the applicant to FEMA to review and for review and approval. I believe they have done that. And number seven. At the proposed plat has been reviewed by town referral agencies and conforms to all applicable provisions of these regulations. All applicable county, state, federal regulations. Uh, final referral comments for the final plat have been satisfied. The concurrent review of the construction documents will include a review of associated documents such as SWMP, CLOMAR and the final drainage report. And, uh, number eight, uh, the proposed final plat provides for the preservation and conservation of the listed natural areas and features. Application was reviewed and referral agencies such as the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Area fourteen, US Fish and Wildlife Service. And the PPRVD floodplain have reviewed. The proposed plat has satisfied current agency comments. Uh, per file comments with CPW, applicant should continue to coordinate with US Fish and Wildlife Service in order to prevent and mitigate impacts to wildlife. And number nine. The proposed plat design provides for the preservation and conservation of surrounding natural areas. Your collaboration and input from both US Fish and Wildlife and the Army US, US Army Corps of Engineers. And then number ten. Uh, similar to the Falcon Commerce Center number, filing number two final plat, this proposed final plat was not preceded by preliminary plat, but it does, it did have a preliminary PUD that was approved, which in my case it really goes over a lot more material uh, than even a preliminary plat does, so. Yeah, and, uh, no, yep, thank you. And both staff and planning commission find that Falcon Commerce Center filing number three final plat does meet the review criteria and recommends town council recommend approval with the following condition. Prior to the issuance of permit for construction, applicant shall submit to the town written approval of the project from US Fish and Wildlife and US Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you.
Okay, um, Andrew, are you gonna do a presentation? Okay. Will, can you bring up her presentation?
The last presentation.
The one that's, yeah. Next slide.
Hello. Andrew Abala with NES representing the applicant. My presentation. It's kind of awkward here as a presenter, actually. So we have Falcon Commerce Center filing number three, next slide. We're reviewing the location based on the previous presentation, next slide. I'm going to do a good job of going through the history, obviously, starting with those owning the sketch plan, we drew base one, which is the northern portion, various final PUD plans for UPS, QuickTrip and Eagle Rock have been approved and then our phase two preliminary plan, which was, uh, moved in July twenty-twenty-two, which this is part of. And then, uh, filing number two, which was approved in October twenty-twenty-two, which is the first section of the extension of Tarazo Drive. So obviously, we've got those in a little bit more detail, next slide. So the filing two final plat is, is that area highlighted in blue, that was the extension from the existing intersection of Tarazo Drive and Spalding Drive to the south, as we saw in the aerial photograph that Lauren showed in her presentation, it is, it is, uh, uh, constructed now and the road has been accepted by the town. We took that all the way up to the edge of the, um, that mouse habitat area and the area where we're crossing the, um, creek, which is part of this application and there was, there was a cul-de-sac there of template basis right now. That will be removed when this, um, uh, filing plat, the final plat of phase two is, sorry, filing three is obstructed. Next slide. So I just wanted to provide the context of the preliminary plan. So the preliminary plan is, as Lauren again mentioned at the end, preliminary PUD plan effectively access D, oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. So the filing three extension is the area there on the south side, which, um, crosses the bridge and, um, it removes, replaces the bridge. So the intent is to take existing bridge away, replace it with a culvert and, uh, construct a ninety-foot right-of-way with a fifty-foot road, uh, across the creek. There will be a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of this section pending development of the southern area. Uh, we have no plans for development of the southern area right now, um, uh, as I've shown the next, um, slide, it will be, um, part of that, the area D is actually identified as multiple, for multiple uses, um, we haven't got a user on board. Releasing one for progress is now because we know the permitting takes a long time, it's going to be about a year to get all the permitting approved and then obviously construction. So it's good, it's a couple of years out before we can really access that southern area. Next slide. Um, just a little bit more information here, um, we did discuss this with Monmouth Fire District, they have, they actually um, supported the removal of the existing bridges, they did not think it was adequate to support future development on the south. Um, it's old, it's not really, um, built to meet current standards. And they have also approved cross-section as providing appropriate access into the southern section. Next slide, I just need to talk a little bit more, a little bit more about that. So we have, um, the cross-section shown here, so it is a ninety-foot right-of-way, but the pavement, really a road line to road line, which is really to the edge of the curve is fifty feet and within that there was, uh, there was a center turn lane of twelve feet and two travel lanes of twelve feet each to get over the five foot of the bike lane inside. And through discussions through the fire department, they are comfortable that in the event of the needs, they need to access the southern part, evacuate the southern part of the property, it will provide four lanes of access going north because they would obviously make sure that, that was dedicated for people exiting the area so that the whole of that right of way would be dedicated towards outgoing traffic. Next slide. So the plat, um, review criteria Lauren went through in quite a bit of detail, so I'm going to just focus on some of the um, items which, uh, uh, may be, um, a worthy of a little bit more discussion. So obviously, we talked already about the adequate access, so, um, this described that the, um, fire department has reviewed and they're satisfied that it provides that access. And we are also extending utility services through the road into the southern part of the property. Um, next slide. We are proposing a triple cell box culvert to, um, handle flows, um, through Jackson Creek. So that has been assessed and evaluated with the drainage report. And that has been reviewed by, um, town agencies, so that, um, has been determined that this has been designed perfectly to handle those flows. We also have, um, Matt Erickson from KIOR Engineering here, who's prepared the, who's prepared the construction documents, also the drainage report and technical, civil engineering documents if you're having questions. We've also submitted a detailed biological assessment, um, regarding the mouse habitat to, um, the US Army Corps of Engineers and US Fish and Wildlife that is for either to evaluate the foreign wall permits, um, for the crossing of the creek. Um, so that is one of the requirements that we have to go through, which also evaluates the wetlands and floodplains. And, uh, requirements for the, um, CLOMAR, uh, the CLOMAR is in its third review, so that's nearing approval. We've addressed all the comments that FEMA has, so we're getting close on that. And we, we acknowledge that construction cannot take place until those permits are, are in place, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg. We have to put, put the construction documents together and get this, um, uh, plat process moving before we can actually apply for those permits that we cast our construction until the permits are approved. And as I noted, it is a long, uh, long process, that's why we're starting it now. And, uh, we're not disturbing any vegetation along Jackson Creek, there, there isn't that much there, but the areas where they, their vegetation exists is a little bit further to the east. So we're not disturbing any existing vegetation. And it is consistent with the alignment that was shown in the preliminary PUD plan, which effectively access the preliminary plaque for a PUD. And, um, and that preliminary PUD was found to be consistent with all the comprehensive plan of relevant requirements. Uh, I just wanted to emphasize, we're not revisiting the, the plan here or the associated uses, we are literally just looking at the plaque for right-of-way dedication to the town and then the associated construction documents are being, um, reviewed concurrently. And next slide, and with that, just to summarize, as mentioned, that the, um, uh, the fire district have reviewed and are satisfied about the, um, design of the crossing and that, uh, the crossing has been built to accommodate a one hundred year event, um, for the, uh, any flooding on Jackson Creek and that is being reviewed by FEMA and US Army Corps of Engineers have also completed the team associated with the wetlands and the man's habitat. And with that, how much time, sort of, questions?
Excellent, thank you, um. USAF has approved, they've provided feedback?
Yes, USAF was a consultant during the process, we met with them several times on site. And so we have, um, they, I believe they've given a, a kind of a green light in terms of, uh, the review comments and quite that.
Okay, um, other questions, comments?
Just a quick one, um, I noticed in one of your previous slides, um, there was, I think it was a road that may be connecting Tarazo to Wood Carver, is that? Did I read that correctly? Okay. Okay, no, there was a, if you go, yeah, there was a previous, um, it was further down. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple on this, maybe for the engineer. The, so the, the drainage that's going down, and this doesn't really have anything to do with this road, but I, I just need to kind of get this on the record. So the drainage from this project and other projects is negatively impacting Air Force Academy and, um, I believe that there are undersized detention facilities, most likely. I'm not an engineer, so I'm, I'm not going to speak too much on that, but everything's been engineered upstream of this, yet last summer, a lot of them failed. And, um, it was brought up that even, uh, Falcon Commerce Center was a concern. And, um, when I looked at some of these documents in the, um, drainage study, like there's a, there's a document in here, the flood insurance study report that's referenced from two thousand and three. And then there's the drainage map that shows, um, how it drains to the tributaries. And, and a big section of this is listed as open space when it's not open space, it's got lots and even houses and other things built on there. So how does that all fit into this? Cause we can't be negatively impacting the Air Force Academy. So we have to just stay on top of this before it gets too out of hand. Test, test.
So, um, the, uh, per my previous comment, we have had multiple, uh, meetings onsite with the Air Force Academy as well as a, a meeting with various members of our staff at the town, with town staff. And there was a lot of confusion with them, um, from the perspective of Falcon Commerce Center about all the different applications because they see a sketch plan, then a, a preliminary plan, and then various final PUD plans coming in under that preliminary plan and then another preliminary plan for phase two and, and this, they, they were seeing them as cumulatively, uh, cumulative submittals rather than being part of a bigger piece. So there was some explaining, uh, with them, uh, about how, how we got to where we are and what is actually being proposed. So I think they have a better understanding of, of that. But in terms of the downstream impacts to the Air Force Academies, uh, Air Force Academy, we, we are required to release all, all our flows at historic, uh, less than historic rates, so we're not adding any additional, um, to those flows. And Matt can talk a little bit more about that and, and bear in mind that we do have a, uh, I think it's a nine acre area for detention on Falcon Commerce Center. And that, that detains all the stormwater flows for that, everything north of Jackson Creek. On the south side of Jackson Creek, we, we know that we will need another detention pond to service that southern area. So that, that's how our, this site has been planned, to detain everything and release at historic rates, which is the criteria, which is what we require, we require to do.
Right, and I understand the criteria for that and, and I appreciate that.
So we have to piss, pick up off-site flows as well.
Right, right, right. And, but, and, and, and. Right, right, right. And, but, and, and maybe you want us to answer this, but the information that they gave us was that because of how everything drains into Monument Creek, that um all those facilities kind of converge at one spot. And it's, and it's creating a negative impact. I mean, um, the hundred, the hundred-year flows didn't work last summer. And um, as we put more impervious surface down, we, we have to pay more attention to that. And um, we just can't get into a situation like Colorado Springs did, where um the EPA is breathing down our neck because the detention facilities aren't working. So I just need to make sure that we're doing this correctly. It just don't, just don't do math.
Try not to.
Okay.
So my name is Matt Erickson. I'm with Kiahua Engineering, a civil engineer on the project. So when we did the first phase of this development filing number one, we constructed a regional detention basin. So all the developed property to the north of the creek drains into this, routed to, bring into this detention.
Is that the one that's just south of Eagle Rock?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right. So it was, it was sized appropriately to provide both water quality and stormwater detention for all the developed flows, all the proposed improvements that were this development of the north side of the creek. That means that uh, the, the flows will come in at a, a developed rate, which is higher. And then through attenuation or just pounding, the wire will be released at lower levels. And that lower level is at a historic or below actually rate in compared to historic. So the, what we did in that initial analysis was look at what the hundred-year flow is, along with the fifty-year, twenty-five-year, five-year, ten-year flows. What is it historically at the Santa Fe Trail in uh Jackson Creek? The detention basin is sized so that the, the flow being released from the detention basin will make it so the flow at Santa Fe Trail is at or below, in our case, below what it is in the historic. So that, that means that, you know, there's, there's no additional, the peak flows are less than or, or equal to historic. So um, at least from this development, it's a minor impact. Well, no impact in flows to uh Jackson Creek and then downstream to Miami Creek. The issue really is the upstream area.
Right.
Falcon Commerce Center is a, really a, a very small percentage of the total flow that's in Jackson Creek and what ends up making it to Miami Creek. And there's, the upstream flows are really what is the issue.
And, and I, and I understand it, by the way. I'm just trying to not destroy the Air Force Academy and create EPA problems um in, in the future. So, so that nine acre, that's nine acres that's south of uh Eagle Rock? That, that pond is nine acres. Okay. And that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. And so that catches everything north, including like the UPS and all the roads and all that other stuff.
The only thing it doesn't capture is this, the proposed road that we're working on right now.
Right.
But what we've done is the detention basin accounts for that flow draining directly into Jackson Creek.
Yeah.
So we, like I said earlier, the, the cumulative or the, the historic flow leaving the development is still below what it is historically, even with that flow drain.
But historic, how, how, how current is this data? Because the data that I was seeing in this, and I didn't go through line by line this drainage report, because it's, you know, whatever, a hundred pages, um, and it's got a lot of math. Like I said, I don't do the math. But um, how, how current is that data? Because some of the stuff that I'm seeing doesn't look that current.
Well, the calculations are current. So when we do the drainage reports, we, we're specifically, we're not, we'll look at older data, but we're creating, recreating the data as part of our drainage report. So those calculations that we did in nineteen, excuse me, uh, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, with the initial development of the property, those were current. We looked at current calculations. And then we did it again a couple of years later when we did an update to that drainage report. So for lack of different terms, they're current.
Okay, do you see any obvious issues upstream that we need to be paying attention to? That you're willing to like, let us know about?
You know, I, I haven't done a in-depth analysis of upstream just to look and see, you know, what? You said something about there have been some failures.
Yes.
I, I don't know about those. I haven't researched it to see if there are any issues upstream. So now I don't, you know, I, I think the best thing to do is, you know, look at those, those existing developments upstream. See if the developed flows are draining through detention basins. And and then sometimes the best way to do that is through a, a, a study that of a basin-wide study that, that may or may not have been done. I think a study has been done recently.
I'm not entirely sure. But you're, you know, for better or for worse, you're our last line of defense. And so, you know, we just, we just have to not create an issue with the Air Force Academy.
Well, I, personally, I think the, the design that we've brought forward, it certainly isn't, you know, from my perspective, of course, we're, we're doing what we need to do as part of this development. Anyway, we have detention uh that's been being provided for the uh, the proposed improvements and for the existing improvements that are already going in. And we're doing some improvements at the downstream end of, of the creek. Uh, putting in a, a grid control structure, which will hold, hold that channel where it's at instead of allowing it to degrade like it is downstream of the river and tracks. So.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor Protim, I've got an update too. I met with staff last week and they got me a list today, and I'm going to be forwarding this to council. Uh, we have currently twenty projects going on uh that impact our stormwater. Um, we have twenty uh projects that will extend from twenty, they started in two thousand twenty-three, and they should end by two thousand twenty-six. Now, those are approximate dates. We're hoping to have these done by two thousand twenty-six. But there's twenty projects that are more than one acre, and there's seven projects that are less than one acre. They're currently going on to improve our stormwater um management uh process. Also, um, we are going to be proposing in the two thousand twenty-five budget to do a study, to do a stormwater master plan.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, um, this is a public hearing item. Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this resolution? Anybody online?
I've seen that, mayor.
Okay, bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-six dash two oh two four, resolution approving a final plat for Falcon Commerce Center filing number three.
Do you want to add the condition that the planning commission had on there? I, it was on the screen, but now it's gone.
Our engineers.
I've got it here. I can read it if you want. Party issuance of the permit for construction. The applicant shall submit to the town written approval of the project from US Fish and Wildlife and the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Including the recommendation from planning commission.
Second. Ms. Erickson, you have motion and second.
Yes.
Councilmember Kipol?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronix?
Yes.
Mayor Lakai?
Yes.
Councilmember Urida?
Yes.
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 That motion passed seven to zero. Thank you very much. Um, next up, we have a discussion item. This is an update on our temporary suspension of new applications under the land development code. Mr. Foreman?
Yes, sir. Um, mayor and council, thank you. Uh, as you know, in January, January fourth, we presented a land development code application temporary suspension. You granted that through July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I met with Dan Ungarlider and updated him on that. And we also met with Baseline. They worked with Dan uh on where we are on our current projects. Um, and I could read his email if you'd like me to. Uh, but I think it's, his understanding was the council temporary pause receipt of the new development code from January fourth through July fifteenth. The purpose of the development review suspension was to allow the town to fill vacant planning department positions and to allow the new director of planning the opportunity to establish quality services and processes that protect the rights of existing property and business owners, residents and developers during the town's consideration of proposed land use and development applications. He started on April fifteenth, and he's in the process of restructuring and rebuilding the planning department in order to support the expected large number of applications, many which involve large and complex developments. At this time, I ask that the council maintain the established application suspension until July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as previously established. He's going to continue to update, or we'll both continue to update you and the council in our progress. And it's his intention to request this suspension be ended by mid to late summer, depending on the availability of staffing and supporting consultant services. Be glad to answer any questions.
Um, okay, thank you. My first question is, uh, when will you see the job posted for planner two?
Working on that right now. I think uh.
Mayor, the, the, we're first going to be looking to, to fill an admin position, and the planner two position will follow. I'm hoping to have that advertisement out for the admin position uh later this month. And then shortly thereafter, um, allow for the planner two position to have that filled um sometime, hopefully in July or, or the, uh, towards the end of July, realistically.
Is there some reason that we can't uh have both positions filled at the same time? Or at least the jobs posted at the same time?
Um, I could certainly, do, um, mayor, I could certainly work on that. Uh, both job descriptions have been, uh, have been modified and, and prepared. Uh, and they're under review right now uh with uh human resources and, and uh, and the manager's office. As soon as I've got to go on that, we'll go ahead and publish.
Um, okay, I, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but these positions come with certifications, no? As in qualifications through the, you're, you're designated, um, A, A, was it AICP or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, so the job descriptions should not be having to be overly modified. These are job descriptions that are uh done across the country for the same level position. So, what, I mean, we've been in the moratorium since February. The job descriptions should have been already written because we have access to those resources through AICP. And I don't see a reason to further delay getting both positions posted. That's just me. I don't know about anybody else.
Great, I agree.
So we've heard your direction. We'll take action.
Thank you. Okay, um, anything else you want to add, Mr. Ungarlider, about what's going on?
Uh, mayor, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is public comment. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here who would like to make public comment saves?
Terry Hayes, resident of the Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce. Um, a couple of things. I want to say thank you for the proclamation for Small Business Week. That was last week. Um, one of the things that I think is super interesting is according to Biz West, Colorado ranks fifth in the nation with the highest population of small businesses, which is sixty-one percent. So that's out of all fifty states. So we're very much an entrepreneurial spirit of a state. And I think that is fantastic, and our community would not be, our country would not be what it was without small businesses. So thank you very much. I also am going to take a second to speak on behalf of the Kiwanis Club. Um, they were here earlier, but everything was approved through the consent agenda. There's one item that he wanted to point out, and that is this year, the parade has been extended in length. So I know in the past years, there's been a lot of complaints that it's very popular, and a lot of people are shoved in everywhere. So that has been the solution is to extend it. So now the parade is going to be starting at the corner of Santa Fe and Old Denver Road, which is where the bus barn is and the ball field. So if you go Old, Old Denver Road and Santa Fe, so that's where it's going to be starting. And it's a good amount. I don't remember how much it is, but it's a good additional amount. So I think that's going to be very positive for the town of Monument. So I just wanted to share that and get it for anybody else that's watching this or wants to watch the recording, that I think the word should get out there about it, because I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Blunk, uh, this will be about something other than what we've discussed already, right? You can, you can unmute him. Okay. Okay, Mr. Blunk, whenever you're ready, you can unmute and speak.
Uh, yeah, this, this is about the uh, the moratorium topic. I assume it's okay for public comment on that.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the approval on Falcon Commerce Center three. Um, on the moratorium topic, you know, uh, we, as well as many other developers, have been waiting patiently and got the update here tonight. Um, I would say certainly I'm disappointed to hear that they're trying to extend to July fifteenth. We've been working on some deals for months. We're ready to submit. Uh, we'd like to submit because in our particular case for Falcon Commerce Center, we have a, a preliminary PUD that spells out all the meat and potatoes of our development deal. And we're talking simply about sort of compliance items for final PUDs. We would ask that the town council seriously consider allowing a phased development that was talked about last late January, early February, when the moratorium was put in place, to allow for things of that nature that are a little bit easier to administer. You know, it's proven that Baseline has done a nice job, and they can continue on to help through this process. And it just doesn't seem fair that we can't continue to submit. That's going to put our projects into winter, which has winter conditions, which have literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of impacts. And so we're just simply trying to get a, a final PUD submitted to the town. And so we would ask you guys to consider that, given the fact that, that, that time kills all deals as well as adds costs when you have to build through winter months because you can't make a submission and, and go through the process timely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any other people online that would like to um? Okay, then, um, we'll close public comment. Next up, council authorization items. Ms. Erickson?
I have the Girls of the West. They would like to do their yearly presentation on July seventeenth.
June seventeenth?
It is, is that the time of year already? Is it? Were they already? That was so fast. It was like flash. Isn't it a presentation-heavy day that day already?
Okay. I haven't seen the, the draft yet. But I think we limited it to fifteen minutes.
Yeah, until memorize.
That's okay. She can memorize it.
Yes.
She will talk that.
Okay, um, then thank you very much for giving us the heads up on Girls of the West. Next up, council comments. Anybody have any comments they would like to make?
I do. Uh, save the fireworks, and um, that's my first comment. And my second is, I know that as, as Mitch, and we gave you direction on getting uh those jobs posted. Um, I can only speak for myself, but if you come back and ask this to me on July fifteenth, you're going to get a no from me. So do what you have to do.
So do what you have to do.
They have the fireworks, as in the fireworks in Palmer Lake?
Yes.
To be honest, they've been working.
Okay, any other?
Questions? How many um projects do we have on hold right now in the application process?
On hold?
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you how many we have on hold. We have a, approximately, I think fifteen to twenty. I'd have to verify Dan that are in the process. And so uh in some form or fashion, they're in the process. So what I would assume is there is going to be a lot of applications hit the door on whatever date y'all decide to open up the application process. There's a lot of people waiting.
Possible we can get a list of all the projects in general?
That are currently in.
Every, all projects, all ma, all major projects that have a budget impact. So water, public uh or development, um, any, anything that has been deemed a project that's being tracked as a project that has a budgetary impact. Can we get a list of what they all are? And then of course, the ones that are related to legal, we can do that in executive session.
Okay. We're actually working on that right now for a strategic planning session. So that should be pretty easy to do. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. We were going to do that as staff. We're doing that as staff right now, going through a planning process. And then as part of the budget process, we're bringing that to council, showing you all the things that we're working on today and all the things that we're going to propose in twenty twenty-five. So can we make this, continue this as part of the budget process?
Um, I don't know, I think, oh, I don't know. I think, I think that for us to get an understanding of what's going on in the, at least from the planning perspective, we need to see all the projects that are, have been submitted.
So all the projects.
Especially given the fact that there's so much data missing from the, the webs, the board docs under the, the folder that typically holds the, you know, the cleanup work that's being done. There's no way for us to tell if the documents are missing for a reason. Uh, I know you said they're cleaning things up, but we need to know where they are in the process. So if they are.
If you're just talking about planning project, yes, I can get that to you probably this week.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Then we, if we all have them this week, then the next meeting we can, we'll have a better idea of um, how far along. Twentieth, right?
We, we had also talked about a graduated release. Thank you.
But we've only had a few come through since February.
Yep.
And it doesn't seem like we've moved even the ones that were, there was thirty at one point.
Right.
We have not gone through ten, that I believe.
They, that's why I said, I think we're somewhere between fifteen and twenty. I think we are.
So we had thirty when we went into the moratorium and you think we've knocked half of them out already?
I, I think it's closer to twenty.
Okay, well.
But I can't, I don't have that in front of me, so I don't want to be held to a number.
Okay. I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see where.
I'll get that to you.
The council should see where they are in, in the process.
We can get that easily.
So there's a backlog of projects. I understand the reason why. Now that the plug gets open. Have to face the barrel and process on it, but at the same time, getting into that um budget process for the new fiscal, for the new fiscal year calendar that we have to start.
They're chopping.
Yeah, because, you know.
Those are going to make for some long meetings. I think that's what council member Kimball was saying is.
I, I see, I see, I see three things colliding as priorities. So if we um start thinking ahead or planning ahead on these future meetings, when we can start chipping away at some of these things, if that's possible.
And to remind you, we could do the best thing, pro, process we can with the thirty that we started with. Developers have to respond to our comments and so that slows things down. And so it's not always staff slowing things down. It's developers get our comments. Once they get those comments, they may take two to three months before they respond. Right? Oh, yeah.
Confluence of, of major decision points.
One hundred percent agree. Yeah, that's, that, and I think everybody was aware of that when we did this um suspension, that there was going to, it was going to create that bottleneck. And so that's why we're taking our time, making sure that we pick the right people to be in here. We're keeping baseline on and to prepare for that. Because I think with the ones we have now, with the things that we see coming in the future, it's going to be a huge process.
So last question is. Last question is, so when we post these two jobs, how long is the job posted for? And then what's the anticipation of the onboarding or hiring process? Because we're talking, you know, it's May, we're talking about another suspension that goes till July. You know, you're, you're, you're in a, you're coming up on a sixty day window to get somebody hired, onboard and up to speed without coming back and go, we need to extend the suspension longer.
Yeah, so it'll be posted until filled, you know, until we fill the positions. Then there will be a training po, process, but at the same time, we're keeping baseline on. That's why my recommendation to the council was not to in the relationship with baseline, because we're going to continue to need them, even though we've got Dan and Dan's still training, still learning everything with the town of Monument. We've got to keep baseline on just to handle the current load that we have today and to help us with the bottleneck when it occurs in the future.
We use baseline now to get some of those other projects.
They still are.
Yeah, we're still using baseline now. We haven't stopped. That was baseline tonight.
Right. Anybody else? Council comments? Okay, um, we had the, what was it? Town cleanup? What was the name of the project? It wasn't Creek Week. It was, anyway, we cleaned the town. Sam and I, Sam and I walked around town and picked up people's uh bottles of um Fireball.
Till today.
Um, along with bottles of other things that were out there. Be really cool if we all were out there.
Well, I would have been there.
Well, you had a good excuse.
I was there last year.
You were there in spirit.
I was there in spirit.
That's Creek Week, I think. That's towards the end of summer. So anyway, a good time. Um, that's all I've got. If uh there's nothing else, then motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Your adjourn.